Commissioner Zubor, would you call the roll?
Sure. Commissioner Charia.
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Good evening.
Hello. Commissioner Okon.
Here.
Commissioner Singh is not here. Commissioner Watkins.
Here.
Commissioner Weber.
Here.
Commissioner Zubor. Here. And Chairman Green.
Here.
I almost forgot to say here.
Okay. Let's see. We also have our community planner, Patrick Sloan, and our senior planner, Erin Schulto. And tonight we have visitors of the Planning Division intern, Ashley Amy. Welcome. And attorney Sarah, is it Gabbes or Gabus?
Gabus, thank you very much.
Gabus. Sorry for mutilating that from Foster-Swift, the township attorney. Okay, so, and welcome to you all that are here and those that are going to be in Zoomland. We have our last meeting of May 2nd minutes to approve.
I move to approve the minutes of May 2nd.
Support.
All right. We've got a motion by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Foster to approve the minutes of May 2nd. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. All right, and we have an agenda tonight of three items. Any late additions from staff to the agenda?
No changes this evening.
Anything we need to add from the commission? Hearing none, seeing none, do I hear a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
移到了
All right. We've got a motion to accept the agenda by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Weber. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. We have no public hearings tonight, so let's get right on to some old business. And the first agenda item of the evening is the Cherry Hill Village Unit 101 Site Plan Amendment, where we're considering a site plan amendment for the property which is located on the west side of Roosevelt between Monroe Street and Fillmore. We've got some proposed changes to the site driveway. Patrick, could you give us more detail?
Sure. I'll bring up the aerial map so that we have the location here. So this is a property that is at the corner of Roosevelt Street, and it's on the west side of Roosevelt Street. It's Unit 101 of the Cherry Hill Village development. And it's a unique lot in that it has four attached residential units on it, and its primary access was developed with a peninsula on the west side of the lot. And that peninsula is a common access drive for those four units, and it feeds into a back alleyway which then ultimately feeds out to the other roads like Fillmore Street or eventually to Roosevelt Street. And there are a couple of elements of this site which are the reasons why the applicants have proposed to relocate the driveway from the peninsula on the west side. And I'll see if I can zoom in here a little bit more. And they want to take the driveway eastward and direct the driveway onto Roosevelt Street. And at the February 7th Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission had approved the driveway relocation from the western peninsula to the east side of the site to directly go onto Roosevelt Street. And after the Planning Commission approved that site plan amendment, a neighbor on the east side of Roosevelt Street filed an appeal with the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is an appeal process that's both in the zoning ordinance and in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act that allows someone who may be aggrieved by a decision of the Planning Commission or an administrative official or other administrative body, and they can appeal the decision to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And so the applicant to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Carol Beck, who lives on the east side of Roosevelt Street, made that appeal to the ZBA. And the ZBA held a public hearing on April 14th of this year, and the ZBA remanded the application back to the Planning Commission for further findings and a decision. And the main reason that the Zoning Board of Appeals did that was that there was new information presented. There were some plan revisions that were made by the applicants at Unit 101, and there were additional materials presented both with the Zoning Board of Appeals application by the applicant and also from other neighbors in the community nearby that presented additional pictures, letters, and other comments at the public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals on April 14th. So with that new information, the ZBA determined that it wasn't yet ready for a decision by the ZBA without having the Planning Commission reviewing that new information and potentially reconsidering the decision whether to approve the change or not with the driveway. Since the Planning Commission had approved the plans on February 7th, there have been a couple of changes made by the applicants to the plan in light of some of the concerns raised by the neighbors. One of the changes is that on the east side of the site where the proposed driveway meets Roosevelt Street, the applicants had removed some additional vegetation in the clear vision zones to improve the visibility of the driveway, both for drivers and also for pedestrians. Another change that was made by the applicants was on the far west side near the peninsula. In addition to closing off the peninsula, they added a walkway and concrete pad so that the residents of Lot 101 in those four units could still take their garbage to the same place. Right now, as you'll see in some of the pictures in the packet, the residents of Lot 101, on garbage and recycling day, all of that material gets stored on the west side of the site near that peninsula, which further crowds that area. And so one of the concerns of the neighbors in terms of removing the driveway on the west side was where will the garbage and recycling go? So in response to those concerns, the applicants for the site plan located a pad on the west side of the site in that peninsula area so that the residents in that four-unit building on Unit 101 could still move their garbage and recycling to the same place that they currently do now, so that there would not be the collection of garbage and recycling along that side of Roosevelt Street. And I'll just go to the staff report. And I've covered most of the items. I won't cover everything in the staff report in terms of everything that we've gone over because we went through quite a bit in the February 7th staff report in terms of the history of the project. One of the reasons, though, to go over again is the main reason that the applicants are proposing the site plan amendment to relocate the driveway from the west side of the site to the east side of the site is that when the site was developed, the transformer was moved really close into that peninsula area. And as a result, the driveway in that western peninsula was pushed a little farther south to stay out of the area of the transformer. The driveway on the west side of the site is about 10 feet wide, and it only allows one vehicle at a time. So two cars can't go through at one time. But even with one car going through, there's really only room for that based on the width of the peninsula itself on the plan and the allowable width of the pavement to stay away from the transformer to the north, but also away from the lot to the south, which is Unit 102. So as I noted at the beginning of the presentation, it's a unique lot because of that western peninsula that goes out as the common driveway. There's really not a lot of room there and not a lot of margin for error. And unfortunately, with the placement of the transformer and a pinch point between Lot 101 and Lot 102 to the south, it creates a very narrow area in which to have a driveway, which is the reason why the applicants have made the application to move it. The proposed driveway on the east side is about 16.8 feet wide. It's still technically wide enough for one car, although in some cases you may be able to get two cars at once, but on most days, that's really only going to be one car unless it's a really tight configuration. So you may only have one car at once, but it would be a little bit wider and a little bit more margin for error in that case. In the packet are all of the new materials that have been submitted, both going from the Zoning Board of Appeals application to all the materials submitted by neighbors and other residents, minutes of the ZBA of April 14th, and the revised plans. Staff's recommendation is that if the Planning Commission is satisfied with the revised plans from the applicants and the clear vision zone and the garbage storage, then staff would recommend approval of the driveway. Staff has prepared three different motions for consideration by the Planning Commission, different options. Option one would be a motion to approve, which would be consistent with the Planning Commission's motion on February 7th. The other two motions are, option two would be a motion to deny, although it doesn't have reasons in the motion. But if that motion and that option is chosen, then it would be, the Planning Commissioners would have to add items as grounds for denial. And option three would be to defer action. If during the course of the meeting, there's other information that's needed for the Planning Commission to make a decision, then the appropriate motion would be to defer action. The last thing that I want to note is that there's still a pending appeal with the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals only remanded the case back to the Planning Commission for further findings and inaction. So if, for example, the Planning Commission approved the plans this evening, the applicants would not be able to obtain a permit because there's still a pending appeal, and the application would return to the Zoning Board of Appeals at its next available meeting. So there's still another step in this process if the Planning Commission were to approve the plan. So a couple more steps based on the uniqueness of having an appeal in this case. So that concludes the staff comments for this case, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick. I'm going to start down here with Commissioner Charia. Do you have any questions on this amendment?
No, at this point of time. No. Thank you.
Commissioner Foster.
No, I don't have any questions. I think, from my view, it makes sense to move forward with the revised plans.
Commissioner Singh.
Just one question. Is this going to be like one exception for this particular unit, or once we approve this, then?
I might share the mic with him.
Other units may come up and ask for similar kind of variance.
Yeah, that's a very good question, is that what impact a decision like this may have on other lots on Cherry Hill Village. This particular application, it started, I believe, over a year ago, and it started by, I think, the applicants of Unit 101 had filed for a driveway permit with the Building Division. And in some cases where some building permit applications may be more impactful or weighed into planning, they'll add planning staff as a reviewer. So this is one that we looked at with the Building Division and decided that this was considered a major enough change. This isn't just a typical driveway on a residential lot where they can go to the Building Division to get a permit. And the Building Division had realized that and had planning staff look at that. And we decided that based on the configuration of Cherry Hill Village, that to do an additional driveway and change it like this when the original intent was to put a driveway on the west side, that was a major enough change where it would have to come to the Planning Commission. I know that in one other case in Cherry Hill Village that I can recall, this might be maybe a couple of years ago, where it's a corner lot elsewhere in the village, I think a little bit larger lot, where it's a single-family detached lot, and they took the driveway from one street to another. And that was considered a relatively minor change because it wasn't something like this where it was a tighter configuration. So that's the only other one I can think of in the village where there was a driveway change from one side to another, and it didn't really affect the layout. So in that case, it was done administratively. But in something like this where it's a tighter configuration, it's considered a major change based on the history of the village and the original layout, this is definitely something that comes to the Planning Commission. So in most cases, I don't expect too many. We would take a look at it and decide what the impact on the neighbors would be, and if we felt it was impactful on the neighbors or was a diversion of the original layout of the village, we would bring it to the Planning Commission for a decision.
Okay.
Commissioner Weber.
Just one question real quick. So was the original plan more akin to what the bold outline is of the driveway there? Was it supposed to be more, I guess, more width to it like it shows on that drawing there? And then the transformer got put in. I assume DTE just decided unilaterally that's where the transformer needed to go?
Yeah, I think the original, as you can see on this one, the dark bold outline here, this is the peninsula on the west side that we had noted. And as you can see within that peninsula, they have a pedestal there and the existing transformer. So it's in that peninsula. I think the original intent was to have the driveway go through the peninsula and try to occupy as much of this peninsula as possible with pavement, just because of the sheer width of the peninsula and trying to get, maybe not two vehicles at a time, but one vehicle maneuvering safely, we would have wanted to get as much paving within that peninsula because it's a pretty narrow peninsula.
Just to kind of piggyback on the question that Commissioner Singh just asked, I wouldn't think that this would necessarily set a precedent as this particular situation is rather unique. I mean, you have a kind of a hardship there with the transformer sitting there and sort of narrowing the access. So I, just my opinion, the concern of others coming to the Planning Commission or Department to change the configure of a driveway, I don't think is necessarily a concern at this point. I think you have to look at it more case by case.
Yeah, if someone wanted it just out of sheer convenience, and it had a potential result of impacting neighbors or going against the original layout of the village, they may have the opportunity to apply, but we may defer that to the Planning Commission just because of the impactfulness. It's always good in those cases to have an administrative body look at it and make a decision based on the materials presented and the reasons.
Patrick, could you go over just two things, just for my clarification? What was the reasoning, again, why that transformer can't be moved or relocated?
We can let the applicant speak to that in a little bit more detail. Basically, when we asked about that, there are a lot of logistics of getting a transformer moved in terms of moving utilities and moving them to a different location on the site. There's a question of whether DTE can actually do it, and if they can, the expense of doing it, and other factors going on. One of the items the applicant did note is that there are other easements in the area that may conflict with moving a transformer. So that was just after some of the complexities of that that they noted, they decided not to pursue that course of action. But they can speak to that in a little bit more detail.
And then on the other end of the site, what was the main objection to having entry and exit onto Roosevelt as a solution?
And this is also something that a couple of the neighbors on the east side of Roosevelt especially could speak in more detail, but based on some of the written comments that were provided and some of the conversations that staff had with the neighbors, some of their concerns were the volume of traffic coming in and out with four units using one driveway, with that particular access being right across the street from them. So for many years, they've looked across the street, and there's been a row of Arbor Vita, and it's been closed. I guess closed in the sense that there was never a driveway there. It's always just remained the way it is today, is closed. And so to them, it's a change of having more vehicles go right in front of their house along Roosevelt. It's another access point where if people are walking down the sidewalk, another potential driveway to walk across to watch out for, which is one of the reasons why the applicants had revised the plans to clear out some of that vegetation to improve the visibility there. But the neighbors could speak more to that in terms of their concerns.
Commissioner Zubor, do you have any questions or comments?
I agree with what Commissioner Weber said about the precedent setting. I think that, I think this is such a unique situation that I'm not concerned about that, and I do support moving the driveway. I think it will clear up a lot of issues with the neighbor, the adjacent neighbor, and the issues of sharing a driveway with an apartment complex, basically, or a multi-unit building. I think that's a pretty dangerous situation.
Option one.
I do.
Commissioner Egenberger.
Thank you. I have a few questions. In some of the material, it was stated that there was a fence and that, I think the fence was on the 590 Roosevelt building, and something about that the fence maybe wasn't originally there and that was supposed to be a driveway? Do you guys remember reading something like that?
It may have been, and both the applicant and the neighbors can speak to this, but on the screen here, where this hand goes down is the common lot line between Unit 102 and 103. And there's a fence that is noted here that's on Unit 102, and the fence goes across southward and then onto 103. And I think that that fence creates a little bit of a barrier to the south in terms of Unit 102 being able to drive a vehicle. So I think one of the comments regarding the fence is that if Unit 102 were to expand their driveway southward and perhaps remove or relocate the fence, that there's additional width there. As you can see with the peninsula to the north, it creates kind of a narrow frontage for Lot 102 anyway. So Lot 102 has some of the same access challenges that that peninsula creates, where they create a peninsula in part at the expense of the frontage of Lot 102, and then Lot 102 has a little bit narrow of access. So the applicant, or I think the comment from the neighbor on the fence was that there is perhaps some additional room on Lot 102 to expand the driveway southward, which would involve moving some structures, but it's illustrated there.
Okay. I understand. I have to say, I drove over there today, and looking at the driveway setup makes no sense at all. I don't know who created this originally, but it's some words that I shouldn't be saying. It's just nuts. And I feel very bad that this situation is there, but I think one of the things that does concern me is one of the comments, I think, was said that there's concerns when backing out of the driveway, that the people coming out of the condo don't necessarily see them. Well, I'm just as worried about them not seeing the people on the sidewalk if we put in the driveway onto Roosevelt. And...
Okay. Hold on. Okay.
So I also, and I don't live in the Cherry Hill Village, and I think not living there, we don't, at least for me, it wasn't as obvious to me that there aren't driveways in the front of every street. Like, in my neighborhood, we all have our driveways everywhere on each road, and it's what we have. But driving through Cherry Hill, it really is a significant different place. There are not driveways coming along there, so I would think that the people that are walking along there aren't necessarily always watching for it because that's the charm of the village, right? That's what they've created, is this village to have, where everybody comes in through the alleyway. And because of that, that concerns me, to have a driveway all of a sudden right there that I think could be dangerous. However, I look at this other, and it is crazy the way it was set up, but unfortunately, that's the way it was. And I am disagreeing with some of my fellow commissioners. I don't think putting a driveway in there feels like a safe thing to do.
What are you proposing, then, going with the access off of Roosevelt, or what?
Yeah, no, I am saying I think we need to, unfortunately, currently keep it the way it is. I don't like the idea of putting a driveway onto Roosevelt. I think it would not be safe. And again, that said, I think the situation that's there is bad, and I don't understand how DTE can take a driveway and plop a transformer in the middle of it.
Because they do that before the driveway.
So it was somehow there when this little area was created, which goes back to, what were they thinking?
Well, the DTE wasn't following the drawings, you know? That's what, I mean...
So they had created it, I mean, even with a wider driveway there, it's a crazy...
Oh, it's awful, yes.
Yes. It's a crazy situation.
So I'm gathering that your recommendation is denial?
Yes. Yes. And if we could come up with another way to fix this, I would love to be able to because it's not a good situation either way. But I'm concerned about putting a driveway in, in a neighborhood where this is not the norm.
Right. Commissioner Watkins, did you have any comments?
You know, I guess there's, you know, I'm unhappy about a couple of different things here. Again, DTE didn't do us any favors, clearly, right? But I guess I have to say also, the developer I'm looking at, I was measuring the lot sizes, they dropped that fourth unit, I guess, I don't know who lives at 590, but they dropped that fourth unit right there really tightly behind the multifamily, or behind the multi-condo unit, which is really squeezed in there. So it really left no margin for error, and clearly, we got some error by someone dropping a transformer right down in there on that alley. When you look at it, it's a long way to egress from Fillmore to the northwest, or to the, was it southwest, I guess. I'm in favor of making that, just to open up the area. I'm really not happy that there's a fourth unit, fourth house headed north there on North Roosevelt. And it's unfortunate because the development wasn't laid out properly. That fourth unit probably shouldn't have gone there. They could have utilized some green space there. That being said, this needs to open up, and I think the driveway is a good idea.
So what I'm gathering by what you're saying is that you want to force DTE to move the transformer?
I think two things happened here. Number one, I think, again, I want to be clear, I think there should be a driveway to cause that egress to happen onto Roosevelt. And then number two, definitely should pursue something with DTE to figure out how we can move that to someplace much more inconspicuous.
Okay. Commissioner Okon, any thoughts?
Patrick, when was Unit 101 and 102 built, do you know?
That I don't know. Probably, yeah, roughly about 20 years ago.
It's been like this for 20 years. We're talking about four units here. I kind of, I agree with Nancy. I think we're just, I don't know if it's been like this for 20 years and we've been able to get away with it, and I know it's not a perfect situation, but it does control where the traffic comes in and comes out of those four units. If the commissioners believe that we do need to add a drive on the other side, I mean, does it have to be a 16-foot-wide drive? Can we go down to a one-way to kind of control? There's only four units here. So if all four units know which way to get in and which way to get out, I think that would help, again, some of the traffic. So we're not, if we think there's more blind spots exiting onto Roosevelt, maybe that Roosevelt turns into a one-way. 12-foot-wide road turns into a one-way. So everybody's entering the same way and exiting the same way. Again, just trying to alleviate some of the in and out. Maybe we do something like, we don't make it a traditional driveway. Maybe we turn it into a nice brick paver driveway, something that kind of is a little bit more residential, that only the units, the four units know about it, kind of blends in a little bit with the landscape and a little bit more. I don't know. But the way it's designed right now, I wouldn't support it.
Probably should have led with this. Is the project representative here?
Yes.
Come on up and give us your opinion on all of this.
I don't know. I'm Brendan Walker with Midwestern Consulting, representing the applicant, but I also am... I'm Brendan Walker with Midwestern Consulting, representing the applicant, but I also am a Cherry Hill Village resident. So I live around the corner. Patrick's right, I mean, it's going on, this has been a problem for a number of years. It's not just coming to head now, it's been ahead for a number of years. Getting through the process of actually doing it. The HOA was owned by the developer for a long time, so he didn't have an incentive to do it until there was enough houses built. Then it got turned over to us, the CHB, what, one and two boards? And so now they've realized there's an issue and they're trying to accommodate that. To your question in regards to the driveway access, if you look throughout Cherry Hill Village, there are similar situations where alleys terminate into streets just like this. I live on, what is it, I forgot, the middle lot, so I actually have a driveway. We have to pay attention every day for people walking across the sidewalk. It's not just, oh, hey, it's a, it's a fact of life in the village. You can't speed, I have a long driveway, 100-foot driveway, straight, I can speed as fast as I want. Only problem is, there's kids, there's people, there's dogs, there's kids on bikes that are learning how to ride. You accept that when you live in the village. And that's, me as a resident, you accept that. You understand that, yeah, it says 25, but maybe you should be going 15 in a lot of ways. There's usually cars on one side of the road, but not on the other. So there's all those things that we have to pay attention to, that we have to move over if we're on the same side of the parked cars to let everybody else by. It is just wide enough for one car. You can't, or one parked car and one driving car. You can't have three cars going, passing at one time. So the, the design came about because it's not just, it's not just the transformer. If you look where, can you go back to the original survey? There you go. You can zoom out a little bit. So even if they came out perfectly, right, you're still in the middle of two driveways. It was originally designed incorrectly. It was, or constructed incorrectly, however you want to say it. It got exacerbated by where the transformer is. The transformer is, we looked at the cost, we looked at the option of moving it. Only problem is, they're in an easement. They don't have to move. So there's utility easement right there that goes through that, it says they can go there. There's nothing, no incentive for us to do it unless we keep throwing money at them. And unfortunately, our pockets aren't that deep.
You meant the dash line there?
This is a dash line, this is a storm sewer. The easement's run through this.
Oh, through that way, thank you.
Yes. The electrical easement.
Okay.
So, but this is, on top of that, this is a storm sewer easement. So there is configurations over down by Harrison, where you see alleys such as this terminating into different houses. There's ones on, there's a couple more down by Jackson. There's, there's about four instances that, that this occurs, where we have a road, multifamily coming out onto a street right across from other residents, single-family homes with driveways. Unfortunately, you just got to pay attention. And that's, I know that's hard to say in this day and age, but that's, if you live in the village, you really have to pay attention when you're driving. You can't, you can't do a lot of things you can do in other subs, it just doesn't work. So, so our, our design came about because really, we're, these four units or these, these home, these condos are severely adversely affecting this homeowner. If you're that homeowner, how is that, how is that remotely fair that these guys are driving across your house where your, your truck, your car, whatever it is parked, you can only access one half of your dry, your garage because someone could be coming through there at any given time. So Cherry, Cherry Hill Village is trying to do the right thing, the HOA is trying to do the right thing by relocating this to a different spot. Increased traffic, you're talking about four units, the increase in traffic is not that much in terms of, the terminus of where these guys end up anyway is back on Roosevelt or is on Monroe going that way. So they're going to the same spots that they were before. Yes, the, the, the biggest issue, the biggest conflict is the sidewalk. I mean, it is, it is, there's, there's no if, ands, buts about it, that's exactly right. But we live in the village. Unfortunately, we live in the village. It's, it's a fact of life. I have people walking across, we have probably per capita more walkers, more runners, more strollers, more dogs than any other place. Our, we have more trick-or-treaters than I know what to do with, which is fantastic. I mean, you, you get truckloads of kids coming in and everything. And it's just, you better learn to pay attention if you're driving. And I think everybody there understands that. If you live there for any amount of time, you realize you cannot speed, you cannot drive fast, you have to look both ways. And I've had kids run out in front of me and it's just like you kind of have one foot on the gas and one foot on the brake just in case. What we tried to do is open it up a little bit. So we, there's a, there was some landscaping, wherever it went. There was some landscaping, a small tree that we moved out and some bushes so they'd have a better access to see. These are going to be a little bit higher elevation as they come down, so they should have a better, better viewpoint anyway. The minimum's 15 and we're at like 25 to 30 to be able to see on both sides. So they should be able to amply see the sidewalk and, and the road for any cars coming in and out. As far as width-wise, 16, eight versus 12 versus 11 versus 19, you know, the reality is it's not going to be two cars. You have somebody turning in, they're going to be wide, and somebody turning out, they're going to be wide. You're not, you're not going to have two cars pass there. But what you have is this individual, this garage right here trying to make this turn. It's almost, you know, a 1-8. So the width helps them a little bit. It's not going to be a two lane. It's just not, there's not enough tra, there's not enough traffic. There might be in a case at 5:00 or 5:30 when people get home, that you might have two cars and one has to stop and wait. But that's what we do in the village. So.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for that. I don't know if anybody agrees with, with me with this, but my summary of this situation is the, the, the one entrance with the transformer and with the other logistics is just too problematic to change. We lived with it for 20 years, it's a, it's, it's an error in design, but I don't see a, a solution there. Which leaves either just leaving it alone and it being what it is, or we improve their situation onto Roosevelt. And obviously, there's people that would object to that, but I don't see any other solution to make this better for those, those four homes is, five, yeah, five homes.
The one, the single family and the.
Right.
Greg, was, was one of the options to throw it back to planning to say, can you guys come up with some better options? I liked what Alan was saying, coming up with some other ways to look at it, a one-way road, something that can help with.
Are you talking, but was he talking, were you talking about making Roosevelt one-way?
No. The entrance. Or making it through.
Making it, coming in and go out the other way, okay.
Well, no, but we were, they were going to close that, that driveway, I thought, the other end. But you're saying just make it, you only can go, yeah, okay.
That wouldn't solve the problem of somebody coming out of the apartments and potentially hitting a car, leaving the garage from Unit 102.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm not trying to be unsympathetic or, I understand, it, it's a horrible design. I mean, the, the fact that this got through planning the way it did 20 years ago or 20-plus years ago this way is kind of ridiculous. I tend to agree with what Commissioner Watkins said about this, whether, whether it would have been eliminating that one unit or whatever. But nevertheless, it is what it is. I don't live in the village, but I, I live in a neighbor, I live in a densely populated neighborhood. There's a sidewalk that runs right in front of my house. I have to be very careful when I back out of my driveway to make sure, and there's plenty of walkers and plenty of dog walkers and children and all that sort of thing. I have to be very careful when I back out. I emphasize that to my daughter, who's a new driver. And I, I don't, again, I'm not being unsympathetic, but I, I don't see the problem in people having to be cautious, just like everyone else does across the township when they back out of their driveways. I, I, I just don't see, I don't see the difference in the scenario, other than the fact that all the properties are so close together here in this neighborhood. And if, if they design it the way Mr. Walker pointed out, with limited vegetation at the entrances there so that there's clear view either way when a car pulls out, there should be plenty of, if people are obeying the law, there should be plenty of view for them to see pedestrians coming or whatever. Just.
So you're, you're advocating an entry from, entry and exit from Roosevelt?
Yes.
Any other comments on this? Okay, so am I getting the feel for this that, that if we're going to, if we're going to change anything at all, that's, that's our change, is, is having access to Roosevelt? I know that there's a, there was an objection there from people, I guess, that were across the street, that because that's.
We should let them.
Yeah. I think we should listen to them, yeah. Okay, do you live across the street? Okay, could you come up to the podium, please?
Do we need to open up a public area?
No, no.
I was one of the first residents of Cherry Hill Village. My husband and I picked out the lot that we have.
What's your address?
It's 591 Lot 150, I'm not 150, I'm 151. And we picked out that lot because we were close to the park. We have a nice little view of the park. We knew that a condo was going in, the four-unit condo. At the time we purchased our house, that whole front of the condo was facing Roosevelt. Their driveway was supposed to go onto Monroe. And I had a map of it and I've lost it after all these years. Now, right now, that condo has four units. The unit that is at the corner, the northwest corner, its address is Monroe, but it's the entrance to their house is facing Roosevelt. That's one mistake of this whole overlays. My concern is living across the street, the value of my house, I believe, will go down if I have this, especially a pavement, you know? I, I like the idea of you make it a little bit more appealing, but this is another thing. All people, all the people who bought those condo units were aware of the situation and my reasoning that I think that, or their reasoning, I think, was that they have this beautiful view of the park, and they do, the fronts of their condos face the park, it's beautiful. And they were willing to go with inconvenience and the odd configuration of that, that access and, or the egress ingress. Now, the house itself, across the street, they also bought that house knowing the situation. I mean, nobody forced anybody to accept what's, what's there. And I think it's the charm of the village that is appealing to all of us. If that driveway goes through, there's, we're going to lose that charm, I, I believe. But here's another thing. I know you all think that there are a lot of walkers in the village, there are, there are tons. I can see how many times people have kids with strollers and dogs and kids just walking in front of them and they're quite a bit of a distance away. They can't stop their kids. It's a dangerous situation because that driveway is not far from the park. Yesterday, my neighbor across the street was watching her grandson. And just for a moment, and she's usually on the porch with the gate with her grandson, she just went down to the sidewalk area with her grandson, who's about two and a half, I think. And she turned her back a second and you know what that little child did? Runs straight towards the park on that sidewalk. Now, it's a dangerous area for kids' families and I often see like families with a kid on a bike racing ahead of them. And so I, I think basically they, I'm concerned about the safety. And there's another thing, too. Who's paying for this? Is it Cherry Hill Village Two that represents the condos? Is it Cherry Hill Village One that represents the house? I, I don't understand the application and the payment of all this. I really don't.
Patrick.
I had to pay myself to submit the, the zone of boarding, I've never done this before, I'm a little nervous.
Don't be nervous.
I, I'm a second grade teacher, but I can do anything.
We do appreciate your input, though.
We're pretty much second graders up here, so.
Patrick, that, that question, now, that's not something we normally concern ourselves with, but, but who is actually going to foot the bill for any change that we might propose here or approve?
The association, Harriman Associates, who has applied on behalf of the association. It's the association that will pay for the improvements.
Which association?
I believe it's Cherry Hill Village One, or is it?
That would be the house. No, they're, well, no, they're not.
Yes, you're correct. They are run by the same, as are combined finances. So it, it will be the condo association that does pay for it, but it's run under both of them, so.
Okay.
So she won't have, she, where she lives won't have any obligation to pay for this?
I don't know because that's a single, single homeowner, not a single family law homeowner, we don't subsidize any of the payments.
My sister is a condo owner and she has a separate bill every month, it's much higher than mine.
Okay.
So when they have things done to their condo, attached condos, it comes from their condo fund, from Cherry Hill Village Two.
To the condos.
Okay. I was, I was just curious, again, isn't that something we normally concern ourselves with in terms of, you know, who's going to pay for this? But it, but it is, it's, in this circumstance, it's, it is a fair question. But I want to get back to the question at hand because really, we're, we're faced with an idea of a Cherry Hill Village change, which, you know, is not desirable, not, not the first desirable thing, or leaving it alone, just denying the proposal altogether.
Well, I feel like we have plan, I don't know, C or D, wherever we're at now. I, I mean, I like what Alan is suggesting, let's look at some other ideas. Making it a, a brick walk, driveway so that it, it looks better, just some other ideas.
Yeah, so, okay, do you want to come up? We need your name and address.
You need to sign in, too, if you speak.
Yeah, and whenever you make a public comment, yep.
My name is Indrajeet and I live right next to Ms. Carol and I'm at the corner of Roosevelt and McKinley and Fillmore. And I am working from home now because of our virtual situation, so my bedroom is my office. And I'm just saying this not to be personal, but I have a lot of windows on my bedroom that I, is now my office. And I sit there and there are three public schools bus stops. There are little kids right there. I am worried about the safety, sir. I am not worried about the aesthetics. I am a mom of two kids and I sit there and I watch every day because I want to look at the park, my computer's right there. What are we going to do if, 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 it is really small side triangle? Please, come and see. My house is at the corner lot, I cannot park a second, one car outside my garage. I'm okay with it, I've been living there for 16 years. Please consider the safety of little kids that are right on that stop sign, boarding the buses. We have a lot of kids. And moms come there with their kids, right at 8:30 is the elementary school bus stops come in there. 8:30 is when people leave for their work. Please consider the safety of the little kids. If you guys will not, who will? That's all I have to say. I'm not worried about the aesthetics, I'm not worried about the cost. I worry for the kids' lives.
Okay, thank you.
Please consider that.
Very important comment. Thank you. Okay, so.
We've got more people.
Oh, well, okay, come on up.
Name's Mary Anderson at 621 Roosevelt, next door to Carol. And nobody here has mentioned about the kids waiting for school buses. And I brought that up last time about how we have school buses on Roosevelt Street, how buses have had to hit cars on the front of the condos because everybody's parked on that road. And when the buses can't get around, they've actually hit the buses. And nobody's thinking, like she said, about the kids. We have the little park there, we have a big park down at the other end. You have kids coming both directions all the time. Older kids on bicycles and you know yourself, kids don't pay attention. We have to do it. So I just want you to be aware, like she says, of the kids and what happens on that street. We have a lot of mothers who walk their children in strollers. We have a lot of people who walk their dogs. And I don't understand why they can't walk their dogs. It was my understanding, it was because they didn't have enough room in the yard, so they just keep their dogs penned up on the porch. Well, let them take them down to the park. We have a beautiful dog park just down the road from where, from Cherry Hill Village. Let them take them down to the park.
Okay, thank you.
But think about the kids first, please.
Thank you. Come on up. Come on up.
Good evening, thanks for having us. We are actually the homeowners of Lot one oh two, but that, this is being affected by.
What's your name?
Kathy Johnson, this is my husband, Jonathan Johnson. I get nervous talking in front of people, too, so I'm just going to read off of this real quick. In the summer of twenty twenty-one, Harriman and Associates came to us and asked us about the whole situation of changing the dynamics of the driveway. And we, we were really thrilled about that because it has been an issue, my husband can't use, we can't use the driveway fully because of that interruption with that driveway for the condos. And I was at the, I was on the virtual meeting with Cherry Hill Village Homeowners Association meeting, and they passed the approval to make these changes for this, to, to encourage to switch out the block that, bury, put a barrier there and to have the driveway going out onto Roosevelt. The reasons for the appeal from when we were here last time was about the aesthetics, about the four arborvitae bushes being something that they didn't want to take that down, because I guess they liked the aesthetics of that, which is, I understand, traffic, safety, and home value. Number one, the aesthetics, it's just four bushes. Traffic, it really, like that gentleman just said, it really doesn't change the traffic. The cars that come in and out of the alley still have to go around in front of, onto Roosevelt Street, so it's not really changing the traffic. People are still using Roosevelt. The cars don't just drive back and forth in the alley, they have to leave and go out onto the streets. And the exit entrance that is going to be going out on Roosevelt only involves four condos, it's not going to allow the use for any other vehicles in that complex there, it's just for those four cars. So I'm not, I don't understand. As far as school buses, the school buses drop kids off all over the neighborhood. It's not just, if you, the, the concern for safety for these kids, the kids are on every sidewalk. There's driveways and alley openings all over the neighborhood. It's not just having that one driveway going onto Roosevelt isn't going to make a difference when they're all over the place in Cherry Hill Village. There are driveways opening up, or sidewalks going through every driveway and every alleyway throughout Cherry Hill Village. So the safety, it's, there's kids everywhere, so they having that driveway going out onto Roosevelt isn't going to, is not going to change anything. They're still going to pay driveways after driveway after driveway, alleyway after alleyway, after alleyway to get to a park. So I don't under, we don't understand why that would make such a big difference. Safety, strollers, kids using their sidewalks, yep, every sidewalk in the village has driveway or alley crossing over it. My safety is a big concern for me, as you saw, and, and coming by my house. My car went, is only four feet from my garage door to the alley driveway for those condos. I'm still in my garage pulling out when cars come out from over the side of my driveway. So like, if I'm pulling out of my garage, I'm still in my garage, and I've had cars by, go around here and almost hit me several times already this year. So I would really like to be able to have this closed so I can come in and out of my driveway without the fear of getting hit by a vehicle because they cannot see me here. So that would be great. To move this driveway over, well, if we move this driveway over, what's going to happen is, is I'm, I'm not going to be able, I'm going to have to, the driveway, the garage door is still right here, so having this moved over some is not really going to, how am I going to pull into my garage if I've got my garage door here?
Yeah, we understand those, those.
I'm saying so.
Those difficulties, right. Somebody maybe can ask, answer this question for me. The four units, how, with such limited access, how is their trash and recycle picked up?
Um, as you can see, I believe I put some pictures to the board before. They, the trash man comes to the alley, all, all four of these condos, along with my, my house and the condo.
So they have to.
They all put it all, right there by that, right by that transformer. Where they're planning on putting a, a nice piece of cement there to put all of our trash cans on versus just throwing it on the grass there. Because what's happening, too, is when all of these condos, we all put our trash there, it falls over and then the people trying to get to their condos will drive across my driveway and across my grass and then go to their house because trash cans will blow over and things like that, so it's, it's really crazy right there. So having them block that, put a barrier there, will allow us to have full use of our driveway and to be able to not have them blocked by the trash on trash day or whatever. But then they can use that way over there, which would make it so much easier. As home values, again, not being able to use my driveway, that affects my home value as well.
Yeah, I understand.
I mean, when we bought the house, yeah, I know, when we first bought the house, we weren't, we really weren't paying attention to that. We were just so in love with the village, how beautiful it is there and the aesthetics of, you know, the Victorian homes and everything else. Didn't think about the driveway until after living, like, what even?
I thank you.
I think no matter, I think no matter what we do, Mr. Chairman, we're not going to please everybody in this situation.
Well, there's nobody happy here, at all.
You, you did speak already?
Yes, go ahead, if you, make it brief, we, we need to move on.
Our is her being concerned about being hit by another person in the alley there. It never has happened, near, nearly maybe it hasn't happened. Secondly, those condos over there and that one house, there are two exits from that area into Fillmore, one on each side of Fillmore. So all of those cars have access to, oh, thank you, to Fillmore, which divert, diverts traffic from Roosevelt. Now, once you're on Fillmore, you can go further north to Hancock to get out, or you can go south to other areas in the village. Now Roosevelt is one of two main arteries from, from Cherry Hill to the end of Cherry Hill Village. So those factors help solve the problem of congestion there. The triangle area that they're talking about is the smallest one in the village. The other, at the previous presentation, it showed the triangle area, which was much larger than the current, than the one that is being proposed. For that reason alone, that's another issue about visibility. And also, for twenty years, there has been no accidents on Roosevelt because there was no access to the alley there. And one, I have to make a statement. In this day and age of protecting children, we know what we're going through in the United States and all the anxiety resulting from protecting children. This is an opportunity to keep our children protected instead of being exposed to possible accidents. And that's really an important issue, I think.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Patrick, could you, um, could you? Can I? I'm sorry.
We have, we have. We've got all the pictures.
We've got the pictures. Can I, could you go to the? Right. Could you go to the aerial photo on the first page of the engineering drawings? I have a question about this, because I'm looking at this, and if you could zoom in to, toward, yeah, right about there. So, so right where your little hand is, is the proposed new driveway. And if you scroll, if you just kind of pan over to behind that house on the corner across the street on McKinley, there's a, there's a driveway coming out there, too. It's right there, I mean, that's an alley, no, not that one, the one across the street from that. Right. That's a very similar situation. It, it appears to me that it's coming out from behind some houses, and it's, it may have a wider cone of vision, but not significantly. It's crossing the sidewalk, it's right there by the school bus stop, it's, you know, it's right there by the park. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, man, I'm trying to figure out what the big difference is between that situation and the one going into this apartment or the condos.
But you still have.
But it's still coming out from, from behind some houses, I mean, you can't, across the street, having a, having a big driveway across the street doesn't mean that people coming out of the alley are going to see people on the sidewalk on this side of the street. You know, no one will be able to hear you on the video if you're not at the, at the.
Well, I think, yeah, we do need to move on. The, the thing that's, that's very relevant here is the fact that we're not totally breaking with tradition if we do decide that, that, that exit onto Roosevelt is should be what happens. I think, I think this, this has been like this for, we said, twenty years or so? I, I think it, making a decision tonight might not be in the best interest of anybody because it sounds like we're trying to, you know, either push something through or deny. Go ahead, Commissioner Watkins.
This point of protocol, Mr. Chairman, so our decision tonight pushes this back to the BZA. Am I correct in saying so? That's either for you or for Patrick, am I right?
Yeah, if the, if the, if the Planning Commission affirms the same decision that it made in February with the only changes being that there's more clear vegetation, more clear area on Roosevelt Street. And, because the only two planned changes have been, since the Planning Commission approved this on February seventh, is that the vegetation has been cleared at Roosevelt Street for better visibility. And the second change was the addition of a concrete garbage pad on the west side. And I'll bring up an aerial photo from two thousand, I think this one was taken maybe around trash day. And you can see, as one of the neighbors was mentioning, it may have been a heavier trash week, we don't know, they don't take, we don't get the photos every day. But every few months, we get photos, and this particular one, I think we caught them on either trash day or perhaps the day before.
Too quickly, Patrick, what the point I was making is, is the BZA gets another bite at the apple on this, am I right in saying so?
That's correct, the BZA would look at it, CBA.
Thank you.
But wouldn't the CBA only, can only rule if there was more additional, if there was information that was held back? Or for us, for the Planning Commission to actually make a decision?
The, the zoning board of appeals, they, they would act on the same information that the Planning Commission has before it. And if they find that the person applying for, to the ZBA, if they find that, that, that the person was, was aggrieved and that the driveway is detrimental based on the standards of the ordinance, the ZBA can overturn a decision of the Planning Commission based on the standards in the zoning ordinance and in state law.
I, maybe in the minority here, and that's fine, but I really would like, and, and similar to what you were saying, Greg, let's try and come up with a way that we can try and create something that feels as safe as possible while also helping the situation that the, the homeowners are in with their driveway. And, and I feel like we could, by we, Patrick and, and the people that know how to think about this could at least spend some time thinking about some other options. Alan came up with some ideas in thirty seconds, which I found really impressive.
Well, what I don't like here is, I feel like we have a bunch of neighbors that live right next to each other. And we're not going to be able to make each one of you happy. I would love for you guys just to get together, work with Patrick, and come up with a solution that meets in the middle. And if that takes a couple more meetings to do that, I think it's worth it. It's been like this for twenty years, you guys want to make it different, but you guys have lived there for twenty years. And we don't want to see neighbors hate each other because over a driveway.
Right. Yeah, I agree, I agree with. Agree with Alan and Nancy both. One at a time, please.
The other thing that I'm concerned about here, I, I don't like the assertion that somehow we're not concerned about the safety of children or anything like that. It's quite the opposite. We all live in neighborhoods in this township where there's plenty of children and families and dog walkers and all that sort of thing. I just told Commissioner Singh that in my neighborhood, I have to look both ways when I'm backing out of my driveway to make sure there's not children. There's a bus stop right down in the corner from my house, I have to be aware of that sort of thing. That's where we live, we live in a suburban, highly developed area. And that's what, that's what you get when you live in these areas. Again, I agree with Commissioner Watkins that that design is horrible. And shame on whoever came up with that twenty-plus years ago. But that's what it is, and that's what we're faced with. And now we're being asked to address it. I agree with Commissioner Ocon that I think, even though I'm in favor of putting an entrance onto Roosevelt, I do agree with Commissioner Ocon that I think it behooves all of you to get together and find out a way to get, to meet in the middle on this. To make, make, again, no one's going to come out of here totally happy. But I think it behooves you guys who have used this access and live in amongst each other every day to figure it out. We're happy to review it, but I think it's on you folks to figure out what would satisfy each of you without throwing sticks and stones at each other.
So are you proposing to throw a fourth option of tabling?
Sure, if it's what you want to call it, sure.
Or, or just deny this and start over again?
Whatever, whatever procedure we have to do, I.
I, I think, I agree with, with you, and, and I, I just think that this deserves a, a bigger look, quite honestly. We could make a quick decision, but I don't think that that really is justice served.
I, I do think some more effort should be made working with DTE to get them to move that transformer as well. I mean, I understand it'll cost mon, I understand it'll cost money.
But that doesn't solve.
It may not solve the issue, but it could help it. Move it back, why can't you move it to the north? The easement goes north. Get TTE out there, Brandon, to figure out where to move it, seriously. What, what the heck do we pay them for?
But it doesn't, but it still doesn't.
What I'm saying is if we move it this way, and we move the driveway this way, there's not enough room. We end up on this driveway, we end up on their condo's driveway. We take it from this one to this one.
Right.
And I guess I don't understand what the original plan was for this driveway.
I'd like to move that we table this.
So, so there's a, there's a motion.
We can't solve the.
There's been a motion made and supported.
Yeah, we have a motion on the table, which is to table.
So. All right, we've got a motion on the floor to table this discussion, a project by Commissioner Eganberger and support by Commissioner Oca. Now, further discussion?
To do what?
Yeah, what are we going to table it?
To table it so that it can go, go back to staff and, and the, the homeowners and the homeowners association can work with staff on any resolution?
Is tabling an option? We didn't have that as one of our model motions.
It wasn't one of the model motions, no.
Yeah, so the option three would be defer action, which would be the same as tabling, and.
Pending what, though?
Okay.
Yeah, it would, and we had pending the following, and then in parentheses to add items. So there would have to be a reason why, why we're tabling. If it's something with, you know, investigating something that was discussed here at the Planning Commission or what, what does the Planning Commission want the applicants and staff to come back with? We've met with both the applicants and the neighbors in terms of, in terms of their opinions, their thoughts. I think a lot of the things that they've, that they've put in the packet and have said this evening are, are their positions in terms of where they are. I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's any room for, for movement or coming back with any kind of a compromise. But with a deferral of action, we would need some direction from the Planning Commission in terms of what the Planning Commission wants at the next meeting in terms of new information.
Well, since I made the motion for the table, I'll tell you what I want. And that's to come up with, you know, again, Alan came up with a new suggestion just, just, just now, and maybe you've been thinking about it for a while after reading the packet. But it, it doesn't feel like there couldn't be other ideas. And that, that's what I would like to, to have come back.
So the difference between.
Some new ideas and new ways to look at this, that obviously, we're not going to make everybody perfectly happy. But there, there needs to be some other ideas to look at and, and ways that we can compromise on this.
So option, option three, option three is. Sure, absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner West, is that right?
Weber.
Weber, oh, sorry, I didn't, I couldn't see it very well from over here, okay. Thank you, yes, I would just like to remind you that there is still a ZBA appeal pending. Thank you, yes, I would just like to remind you that there is still a ZBA appeal pending. So procedurally, it has to go back to the ZBA at some point. So if, if you make a recommendation back to the ZBA, stick with our original approval, then they can make their decision. If you make a recommendation back to the ZBA, nope, we like the new site plan amendments that they did. We would like for you to consider those as being approved as part of the appeal. Then that would be your recommendation back to the ZBA. If you want to table it to come up with more ideas, I would make it a very narrow timeframe because there is still that appeal pending and there is still the due process concerns of the appellant in that regard. So you want to make sure that you're mindful of that.
So their appeal, though, is based upon what we're looking at tonight. Am I correct, or is it, what the ZBA is going to come back with is thumbs up or thumbs down on that?
Their initial appeal has to do with what you originally approved on February 7th, which was the entrance to Roosevelt. After the appeal was filed, then the applicant came back with some suggested changes, which then the ZBA remanded back to you to consider those changes, which were some site clearing of some shrubbery to maintain some better site distance at the new drive and to put in the concrete pad related to the trash issue for the driveway. So if you're interested in more resolutions or more possible resolutions, then I would just make sure you narrow that timeframe. Maybe one, you know, come back at the next meeting so then you can make your findings and send it back to the ZBA.
Okay, so what I'm getting at is, is tabling a, is that the way we're supposed to? We have that motion on the floor, we have to deal with that. But should we have basically gone to option three, which the deferred action arrangement?
Well, deferring the action is the same as tabling.
It's, it is the same.
Yeah, it's the same, same effect.
We were approving that word with its design. We added some things to make it better. If we pulled it, wouldn't our February 7th still be approved and we just go to the ZBA?
So.
All right, all right, please, well, let's talk up here.
I just, it's a question.
Right.
At the Planning Commission, they got a appeal, there was a, a comment to the ZBA. If we didn't make the change, any, any change to our drawings, that would put the ZBA to make a decision, correct?
Yeah, procedurally, that would be correct if, if the applicant went ahead with the drawings that were approved on February 7th. The Planning Commission may be hard pressed to go ahead and deny because the decision was made February 7th. And then it would rest in the hands of the Zoning Board of Appeals. In this case, the only changes to the plans have been the improvements for the visibility and the, the trash area concrete pad on the west side.
Basically, our hands are tied. I mean, I don't, I don't see that, either way, it goes back to the ZBA. And to answer Mr. Walker's question, okay, yeah, we approved it in February, but per their right, they appealed to the ZBA and remanded to us. So to me, that puts any action that was done at the February meeting at best on hold, pending the, the outcome here and the final ZBA hearing. Correct me if I'm wrong.
You're not incorrect in that regard. The, the Zoning Abling Act does indicate that when there's an appeal filed, that it stays the action related to the original decision. However, if you receive new information between the February 7th approval and now, the applicant, the developer doesn't have a vested right. He hasn't, he hasn't started any construction. He doesn't have a vested right in that, in that site plan approval. That said, he might become an aggrieved individual upon revocation. So whatever decision you make tonight with regard to whether you want to recommend back to the ZBA to approve or to, that you are standing by your original decision, whether you want to recommend to the ZBA, we've gotten new information. And so therefore, we want to revoke our earlier decision. ZBA, please process your appeal. Either way, the ZBA could still process that appeal and say, you know, we are going to affirm the decision that you had made previously. So at this point in time, you're, you're really making a recommendation back to the ZBA is what you're doing.
So the only new information, the new information is the, the alternate driveway design, which I don't think any of us likes, right? That's the new information. We had already approved the, the entrance onto Monroe. The only thing that now is before us is really, Roosevelt, is, is the new driveway setup in, at the side, no.
The alley is just a sidewalk.
Yeah, okay.
It's just a sidewalk so they can put trash.
Right, so, well, I'm just trying to get, get a hold of where we are legally.
The new information, I think, is that the neighbors object to this and.
Yes.
Got a lot more pictures.
But we have an alternative that's, that's set before us, which, again, we don't, we don't really, really like. So how do we, how do we put this back in this, in the form of, we need to look at this from a couple of different angles before we come up with a resolution? In the meantime, ZBA may say, ah, let's go ahead with the original approval, which was the access onto Roosevelt, right? I mean, it, it could all be for naught if the ZBA says, well, you approved the, that access. So we're just, that's, that's what we, we like. Is that basically summarizing it? That we're, what we, what we do really doesn't count, like Commissioner Weber says? You know, we're kind of, you know, we're out there in the wind. What we're doing tonight really is not going to, going to have a bearing until we hear from the ZBA.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say what you're doing tonight is in the wind, right? Because like I said, if you have new information, so for instance, the new information being the, the information from the property owners about the safety concerns that perhaps you didn't consider in your original approval, the new information as it relates to, well, there's a new sidewalk going in, we like that. Whatever decision you make, you just need to make sure you, you justify it with the new information that you've received. And then send that information, your justification, one way or another, back to the ZBA to let the ZBA know what your recommendation is back to them to either approve it as is, approve it with the amendments, or deny the appeal.
So, so if we, if we take option three, then we're basically accomplishing a, a wait period where we can further look at alternatives, right?
Yes, because.
And we're going to, and we would say that to the ZBA. That would be that, that part of the motion that says that to the ZBA, that, that this, this is, that the driveway access onto Roosevelt is on hold pending further design initiatives.
Well, the driveway access is on hold anyway because it's all stayed, right?
Yeah, because it's on hold anyway, right.
So the driveway access is on hold, period. So, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought.
So how do we get, how do we get further design input and design action in order to look at this scenario and come up with a solution? How do, how do we initiate that from our standpoint?
Yeah, and I think Patrick's recommendations and his motions are appropriate where he indicates if you want to defer action on it to receive, to get more information related to the new information that you have received this evening, related to your original approval, that that's appropriate.
Did that answer your question?
Well, yeah, except that tabling, a tabling motion, which is on the board or on the, up there before us right at the moment, doesn't allow us to add anything, is my understanding. It's just tabling.
Yeah, and I would recommend, I would recommend a friendly amendment to that motion to table it for a reason and for a limited period of time to gather that information.
I was ready to, you know, vote on, on untabling the table, you know, but, but we could just add to it.
I mean, the, the long and short of it is, is that the ZBA remanded it back to you for a recommendation. So if your recommendation is, well, we need more information before we can give you a recommendation, then you can table that and obtain that information. But like I said, you do have an appeal pending and so you do have the due process rights of the appellant to think about. So I would make sure you have some findings and I would make sure that you have a limited period of time that you're tabling it.
So then let, let us.
Chairman, if we are tabling it, we, we are asking for reasons. As discussed, Commissioner Ocon said, he gave a few solutions right away. Commissioner Weber said DTE is another solution. We were also discussing about some trash improvements where trash can be put on. So all these things, if the homeowner association or the residents there, they can discuss with the staff and come up with some better solution. And there may be other solutions which they can come up with. So I think that's what we need to table it for. Refer back to DTE, see if there is an improvement which can be made for the trash area. And also if there is any other suggestion, as Commissioner Ocon said, make it one way or, you know, make it a brick paver or whatever.
Commissioner Charia, you had it, I think you had it.
Yeah, I, I just feel that, you know, we are just taking somebody's pain and giving it to somebody else, you know. So one person's pain becomes somebody else's headache. So I, I am for actually denying it and then they come up with a new solution based on the fact that the safety of the kids is something that I won't be able to sleep with. Because for 20 years, this has been the situation and there's not, not been any accident. And God forbid, you know, because of this, of this, an accident. I agree with Nancy quite a bit in terms of.
Okay, so now let me get this on a point of legality. So if we, if we denied this tonight, then the ZBA, whatever they come up with, takes, the, they take the measure that, that what they say goes? If we deny this? Because then they're the only ones that are dealing with it.
And all I can say at this point, related to that, in, in this open meeting, without disclosing sort of attorney-client communications, is that there is still an appeal pending that has to be dealt with.
So I did not want to put us in a situation where we just wash our hands of this. And it sounds like if we do deny it, that's what we're doing, right? Because then the ZBA is going to say, well, we're either going with this plan or that plan. I wa, I want us to be part of the solution. And the only way to do that is to not make a, an approval or denial, but put a, and that should be the option three, which is to put this aside while we look at the alternatives to solve many different problems, as Commissioner Singh said. You know, we, we can look at this from the different angles and come back with a, a potential solution.
So, since I did the motion, it sounds like I need to do an amendment.
Yes, it does.
Is that correct?
One second, Mr. You only, and not to throw Patrick under the bus, but Patrick said at the beginning of this that there's really not, there's been much discussion already and that he, he feels that we're never going, no one's ever going to come to an agreement on this, that the planning department doesn't feel, and you, correct me if I'm misstating this, Patrick, that there's more that they can add to this as far as revision or anything like that. And if that's the case, and please correct me if I'm wrong, if that's the case, what are we expecting them to do?
I think, I think we were expecting them to go back to the drawing board and come up with a different solution.
Understood, understood, but I'm just telling you what I heard Patrick say.
Yeah, and I can, I, I can restate that, is that the applicant's position is that they want a driveway onto Roosevelt for all the reasons that they stated. And that doing something different in the peninsula based on the materials and the comments that they provided is insufficient. As the applicant noted, if that transformer is moved farther to the north and as a result, the driveway is moved to the north, then the driveway to the west, they now have asphalt coming off of, off of the peninsula onto their drive, which narrows that as a result. So therefore, the position of the applicant is that they believe that this driveway is essential. The position of the appellant to the ZBA and some of the other neighbors is that no driveway whatsoever here is necessary and that the driveway on the west that has functioned for 20 years should continue to function as is. So both positions are, are fairly opposed where they, they both want one access, but they want that access on opposite ends. Should it be one way, I think they, they would be equally unhappy because that would mean, yes, a new curb cut onto Roosevelt. But it would also mean keeping that peninsula open and still having vehicle traffic and having some of those pinch points at some of the driveways. I'm not sure if having a one-way and have it both sides, if they would even build that because the applicant's not proposing it. So that's, that's how I see, based on my conversations with both the appellant and the site plan applicant and the materials that they provided.
Okay, so you want to amend your emotion, your motion then?
Yes, but I need some help with it.
You can withdraw your motion, or you can ask somebody for a friendly amendment.
Oh, somebody else has to do a friendly amendment?
You, you could ask someone to make an amendment. If somebody doesn't like your motion, they can make an amendment. You decide whether you, you accept that amendment or not.
I guess I just still want to table it and I want, I want new ideas. I understand you're saying you don't think you can come up with any, but I think you can. I have faith that you guys can get it together and figure something else out that makes this work. I'm, I'm sitting here looking at some ideas that I think would be pretty helpful. And I believe that, that it can happen.
So the table in motion should be pending further design input or design information?
Design ideas?
Yeah.
And bring it back to us with some fresh design ideas.
I, I would suggest then your motion be a motion to table this until the next Planning Commission meeting to, for the submission of additional ideas related to the safety concerns that were raised this evening at this meeting for our consideration and making our recommendation back to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
What she said.
Yeah, exactly. I could try to repeat it, but there'd be a lot of stop and starts.
Well, this is being recorded, so you.
Support.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor that has been amended by Commissioner Egenberger and support by Commissioner Ocon. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote on that, please?
Do we have to ask for further discussion?
I thought we just did that. Well, that's what, well, okay, so, so, yeah, we'll do further discussion.
I mean, I just, I, I agree, I just feel that we aren't going to, nothing magic is going to happen. It's going to make everybody happy and.
But we're going to, we're going to say that we at least gave it our best shot at resol, as resolution on this. Rather than just washing our hands of it and just denying it.
Well, I was going to support it.
Pardon?
I was planning to support it.
Well, it's already been supported by Commissioner Ocon.
No, no, approve, support the changes.
The, the changes, okay. So you want to call the vote on this motion, please?
Sure, Commissioner Charia?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
No.
Commissioner Ocon?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
No.
Commissioner Zubor, no, and Chairman Green?
Yes, so I think we had, what, three noes?
Five, four.
Four noes? I thought there was.
I think there's four noes and five yeses.
Five yeses. So that means that the recommendation to table passes. And from here, that, this doesn't go to the trustees yet, right? Patrick?
It does not go to the trustees, it doesn't go to the ZBA. It's a, it's a site plan amendment. And it, the, the decision rests with the Planning Commission unless there is an appeal to the ZBA.
But they're still wrestling with the appeal that they already have?
Yes, there's still a pending appeal.
They still have that one, right, okay. All right, so at that point, there's nothing for us to do. Now, the further input from the association and members to staff in terms of alternative solutions? I mean, what kind of sources do we have that can come up with?
Well.
We're, we're a little bit of an impact.
I'm sorry?
We're a little bit of an impact. There's four homeowners.
There's four homeowners that want Roosevelt.
Right.
One of the.
Okay, go ahead.
One of the suggestions that I would have.
One, one meeting, please.
Wait, sorry, there, we're still having a meeting.
One of the suggestions that, that I would have for the next meeting is somebody from unit 101 to be here. I'd like to hear their input.
So what we can ask is if, if there's anyone from 101 that wants to provide anything in writing beforehand, they, they wouldn't be required to. We could ask for information from the association itself. I, I know the association has voted to make the improvement in terms of the changes. So I, I don't know if there's anything in writing from the association either. From a, from any design changes? We, we've been working with the applicants on and off for over a year, just in terms of different types of things. And so from a staff point of view, there's nothing that readily comes available in mind for me. Maybe, maybe some additional signage in some areas, but we've, we've been through quite a few iterations of this in terms of trying to make the best of the application. I don't know if anything is, is going to manifest itself in the next two weeks before the next packet goes out.
All right, well, we have tabled it, so it's going to be up to the necessary entities to, you know, come up with some solutions before next month, right?
Well, they, they can, they can provide a response to the action to table. The applicant is not compelled to change the plans. The, the applicant can go, go forward with the plans that are proposed. If there's any written materials or responses to the request for additional items, the applicant can provide, applicant can provide a letter or something like that to, to respond to the comments and questions and the requests from the planning commission. But, but there's nothing we can do to require the applicant to submit anything new beyond what's already there. I mean, they can address some of the safety concerns that have been noted tonight. And, and as I previously stated, maybe they, they could explore some things with signage, but other than addressing the safety concerns.
Okay, so what I'm gathering is, the, the ZBA aside, okay? If nothing is presented as a way of change, then we have to deal with, when this comes back to us on tabling, we have to then deal with the same thing we're dealing with tonight is really what you're getting down to, right?
Yeah.
And then we have to make.
And then we'll all just vote how we feel about it.
How we feel about it. In the meantime, ZBA is maybe going to make a determination on their, their end, right?
Only after the planning commission has, has completed the process.
So their, so their determination will always wait for us?
Not always. In the circumstance, they've remanded it to you, asking sort of for your assistance. The, the motion didn't really clarify why they remanded it, but presumably they remanded it to you for some recommendation back to them. What should we do, basically?
We, we need to move along, we really do.
We really do.
The, 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 the vote has been taken, the vote has been taken.
The voters are even taken.
This is not respectful of our time, ma'am. It's not, you're not respecting our time. We, we saw that in the packet, ma'am. We did see that, it was in the packet, in the writing that you gave us.
Okay.
It's not helping your case, but.
It's, we're, this, this, we've, we've taken, we've taken the vote.
We voted.
We, the, the vote has been taken, the motion has been, the motion has been approved by the planning commission.
So, so please, please. Okay, please. All right, let's move on. Let's go to the second agenda item tonight. We've gotta deal with the master plan. We're gonna initiate and update notifications for the plan. Erin, could you tell us more?
Please leave quietly.
Erin, could you give us more detail as to what, what's ahead for us in terms of the master planning?
Yes, thank you. So as required by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, the planning commission is required to send out notifications to adjacent communities that share a boundary, to the planning commission of the county if it, if they so have it. If not, then the board of commissioners, to public entities, to railroads, airports, and notify those agencies and those communities of your intent to plan. And so this is before you this evening as kind of the kickstart of the master plan project, right? So as part of the, the, the beginning of this, at the May 24th, 2020 meeting, the township board approved the contract for McKenna Associates to assist the township with the, the, the planning project, as well as establish the master plan advisory board. Now, we haven't filled those seats on that board yet, that will be forthcoming. But this is kind of the administrative portion of kickstarting the project. So included in your packet was a draft letter that will be sent by certified mail, first-class mail to all of those agencies, as well as a list of the agencies that would be receiving those. So we ask you this evening to make a motion to initiate the process of preparing the master plan and authorize planning service, services division staff to mail those said notices to, to those entities that were listed in your packet. And it's very simple, so happy to answer any questions.
I move to initiate process of preparing a new master plan and authorize planning services division staff to mail notice of the township's intent to prepare a new master plan to surrounding municipalities and other agencies as required by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. You know, a comma would have been really nice.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by, I believe, oh.
Down here, actually, Nancy.
Wait a minute, you were first, okay.
Oh, sorry.
You've got the last one, though.
All right, we've got support by Commissioner Eggenberger. That's, we can do a voice vote on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so.
I just wanna go home.
We're gonna, but, what, you checking out all the places?
I am really tired, I'm sorry.
All right, um, where are we here? Agenda, okay, all right. Next item is public comment. Any public comment? Come on up, sir.
Our first public comment.
Mr. Chairman?
All right, thank you for being here, no. Go on up to the mic, please.
No, you do.
Yeah, you do, because we're recording, yep.
Camera, okay.
Yep.
Good evening, my name is Brad Holt and I live at 40138 Hawksbury Court. And I am the vice president of our condo board and I'm speaking on behalf of the board this evening. Really just to have a question. I, I looked at the minutes of the May 2nd agenda and saw that the Anad, Anon development was up for final approval, but I didn't see any action on that final approval. So I just had a question, and this may go to Patrick, it may go to the commission, as to what the status of the Anon development currently is and what is the future of that development at this point, if we know it? Because I'm getting a lot of questions and I know you, I know Patrick gets questions from my, I'm trying to head all those questions off at the stem here.
Okay, that's the Anon project? Did you care, care to comment on that or no?
Sure.
Yeah.
At the, on the May planning commission agenda, near the end, I believe that the Anon Village development was noted under staff referral, where we received the application sometime during the month of April, I think. And because it was a new application, it, on that agenda, it was technically a refer to staff for review. And so it doesn't show back up on the planning commission's agenda for action until that application is deemed complete, both by the planning division and the engineering division. And there are still a few items that we're working through with the applicant to make sure are complete before the planning commission looks at it. So it may be on the planning commission's agenda for action as early as the July 11th meeting. If not, it may be another month until August, perhaps September, depending on how long it takes for the applicant to complete all their engineering reviews. That, this particular application, it's a final site plan for a site condo, which means that they need to have their county permits ready, their state permits have to be approved, their master deed and bylaws have to be finalized, and all of their security deposits, if they're not already deposited with the township, they need to be in a form where they're ready to be accepted upon approval by the township board. So quite a few steps, more than the average application, just because of how final site plans go. But as I said, if, if everything falls into place the next couple of weeks, they could be on the July 11th meeting agenda. Otherwise, they'll just wait until the next available agenda after it's deemed complete.
Can I answer your question?
Yes, it does, unless anybody in the commission has anything else to offer? When I back out, I guess to say, I live on a dead end and there's only four houses on our dead end. When I back out, I live both ways.
Thank you.
Old people in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Have a good night. Any other public comments? Any, any from Zoom land? Thank you.
Awesome.
All right, so on to number, item number three, back to the master plan. Updating the master plan project. Erin, could you talk to us about the advisory board?
Happy to. So every month, you will have an update very similar to this memo and it will follow this very similar format, unless there's something new that comes in that we want to include in the, in the list. But it's a general update, feedback from the public engagement events and activities, those that are upcoming, the master plan advisory board, and redevelopment-ready community certification. So as part of this, we wanted to highlight that we've had several conversations over the past couple of months regarding what items are going to be included in, in the master plan. Achieving the RRC certification is one of our high priorities in finalizing and adopting a new master plan and then making some significant changes and updates to the zoning ordinance that supports the master plan. That is big checkmarks off of the RRC baseline report. So those are big steps closer to RRC certification. And one thing that RRC provides for communities to achieve those major milestones, to achieve their certification, is they have a grant program, a TA matching grant fund. So based on the progress that we've made related to achieving all of those other, other checkmarks, most notably the PC bylaws that were just recently adopted, we have received a $15,000 grant for the master plan project. So kudos to, to you and all of the work we did for the, getting those master plan bylaws through the, through the process. A couple of updates. The general update, as we've kind of already highlighted, that the township board has approved the contract for McKenna and they've also formed the master plan advisory board. And this advisory board is intended to aid and assist the consultant team and the township staff with the development of the master plan. It will be comprised of approximately 12 to 15 persons, a few members of the planning commission, a couple of members of the township board, and then a large percentage of, most of them will come from members of the community. So it'll be residents, business owners, students, other people that are interested. We do have an application that's currently live on our website, so I'm saying this now to, to the public at large who might be listening in or watching. That application process is open until June 18th, 2022. And then the, the board will be, the board members will be selected by the township supervisor. We do have a number of upcoming events and activities that are going to be coming up related to this master plan. We do have a very robust and comprehensive community engagement strategy. So stay tuned to the focus newsletter where we have monthly updates. Tomorrow evening, we'll be having a study session with the township board and planning commission here in this, in this very room, where we'll do more of the kickoff process and get your, your feedback and your guidance on how we want to formulate the, the project. We will be having some information and comment boards available up at five of our township facilities, the admin building, they'll be up at the library, the summit, the block, and the Cherry Hill Village Theater. And they will be, one, one board will be an informational board, kind of explaining what a master plan is, why it's important, what the proposed timeline is. And the other one is a, a specific question related to what would you like to see in this community? What do you like about this community? And it's a way to engage people that are interested, but maybe don't have time to come to public meetings that we don't see in certain, certain other public areas or events and activities. So it really goes to them. So that's really what we wanted to, to highlight. Finally, we will be, not finally, but one of the big events we're going to be doing is we'll be attending Liberty Fest. So as you know, that is a three-day event, June 16th through the 18th. We will be there all three days. Members of township staff, members of McKenna Consulting Firm will be there all three days and will be engaging with the public, asking them questions. We have some swag to give out, you know, all those types of things in order to, to garner feedback from the community on what they like, what they want to see changed here. And that really forms a lot of the basis of what we come back to you and talk to you about later on. As I already mentioned, the master plan advisory board will be formed by 12 to 15 persons. So if you are interested in serving on that advisory board, please let me know so we can make sure we put your credentials forth to the township supervisor as an interested member who wants to serve.
Erin, on, on that subject.
Yes.
It's been designed that you want, what, three of us or, what, what was the original design of that, that board?
Yep, there'll be three. So what we had in mind was there will be two members of the township board, two members of the planning commission, with the third being Commissioner Board Member Foster, who kind of serves as liaison to, to both.
So she just got herself on another committee?
Lucky you.
And then, and then the rest would be filled with the citizens, citizenry? Okay.
So we have had, the application has been live for about a week and a half and so we have received, I think, six or seven applications already. We have already engaged with a couple of members of PSEP high schools. So they, a couple of students have actually expressed interest in wanting to serve on the advisory board as well, which is a really big, really big thing. I tried doing that in another community, it was, it did not work out. So I'm very excited, there's so much interest from, from the youth community here.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Amazing thing.
Who has thrown in their, their, thrown their hat in the ring up here?
I, I did, yeah. I have a question too. Erin, under the feedback from like the high school students, which I think is awesome, that you guys went and met with the, or somebody went and met with the, the interns. Oh, you went too, I'm just reading backwards here. And met with the social justice club. Their last, the last takeaway you have from that is separation of cultural groups in school and throughout the community. That could be a good thing or would, were they advocating that or were they talking about not having separation?
No, they, they were not advocating for that.
Point was a little unclear.
Okay, yeah, no, they weren't advocating for that. That, that was a surprise, not only for myself, but for others who were, Vidya Krishnan, who is the planning consultant, she'll be, she'll be with us tomorrow evening and she's been a Canton resident here for, for many, many years. Hearing that, not only from, from the students, was a surprise to her, considering the cultural diversity that we have here, that there are, they are segmented not only in their school, but when they started talking about where they lived, they highlighted the fact that they are separated in their own cultural groups within the community. So that was, that was interesting because on paper, this is a very diverse community, but when you, you really look at it segmentedly, there are pockets. So that's something that we need to, to look at and, and review more carefully, especially when it comes to the distribution of public leisure services and parks and recreation opportunities and where they are and make sure that they're, they're spread out evenly throughout the community.
Figured that's what she meant, but it was a little, it was written a little ambiguous.
I apologize if it read, I apologize if it read wrong, there was no way.
That's why I asked.
What's the swag?
I'm sorry?
What's the swag?
We have some Canton bags, so shop Canton bags, yep. So whatever we can bring.
People at home, we wanna get them there, you gotta get good swag, so.
And they're, they're good hardy totes, let me tell you.
Okay, there we go, good hardy tote.
This is why I'm excited about being on another commission, the report is good swag.
You're gonna get some good swag.
Okay.
This report every month, and it will highlight the, the feedback that we get from, from that month's activities. And tomorrow night, when we have our joint session, we'll go through in a little bit more detail the role and responsibilities of the board, of the advisory board, the planning commission, the township board, so that way everyone is, is clear and knows where, where things begin and end, kind of thing. But also, we will go into a lot more detail about our public engagement strategy and where, what type of, what areas of focus that are, are important to each one of you. I believe you all received an email with me, from me last week and then a reminder today with some highlighted questions. So if you just review those tomorrow and just make sure you're ready for, for an active and engaging discussion, that would be phenomenal. So you will be getting this, this, a report like this every month, just to update you on how things are going.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Just one little note on the, the packet that we got here. There was nothing to refer to staff, but the new applications received, is that gonna, like, one replace the other? going to, like, one replace the other? Because basically, that's just a formality anyway that we go through? Is that basically how we're going to do this now?
So, and that was part of the discussion when we went through the bylaws, is that we made a couple of minor amendments or adjustments to the agenda. As we even heard this evening, there was a gentleman who was asking about the Anon Village site plan, which was just a staff referral. We get a lot of those questions on the second floor of, well, what was this? And why didn't I get a notice? And why didn't I know about this? And so, we felt that moving it to the, for reference only, it still allows you and the public to know what's coming, what's coming in the future, but it doesn't confuse them thinking that it's an action item.
That's a formality we didn't need to actually perform.
Correct.
But we still need to, do we still need to approve public hearings?
No, you don't need to approve public hearings.
Don't need to do those either.
If it's an application that's made by an applicant for rezoning or something like that, you do not need to set the public hearing. If it's something that comes directed from Township staff, like we're suggesting an amendment, we're suggesting is rezoning, then yes, you would set the public hearing, because then we're discussing something.
Okay. And then lastly, I thought we were going to see the blessing rezoning again, because it was remanded from the trustees back to the Planning Commission?
Yeah, I can speak to that one. I've spoken with the applicant for the blessing rezoning, and they're still evaluating some of the options going forward in terms of how they want to proceed with that application. So, once we know what their intention is with the application going forward, we'll be able to proceed with it, whether it's, whether it's to the Planning Commission or, or otherwise. So, we'll, we'll follow up with the applicant in the near future to see if anything has changed, or if they want to be back on a Planning Commission agenda. But as of now, they, they haven't, they haven't wanted to be on an immediate agenda until they've weighed some of their other options. So, stay tuned, but I'll, we'll stay in touch with them, and as it goes forward, we'll let you know if it's back on the agenda, or if it's something else.
That scenario might be something that we might want to touch on in terms of master planning, because that was kind of a sticky, sticky wicket there in terms of density and whatnot, and, you know, just because that's in the master plan, does that mean you go to that density, or is there somewhere in between, and so on and so forth? And I think we hit a, we hit a rough area there in terms of the residents, and just township initiative in terms of, you know, what we want, where we want it, kind of, kind of scenario. So, anyway, I just thought I would ask that question.
Speaking of notice issues, Erin, you brought up people getting public notice and things getting, coming up here on the second floor. One of the, obviously, one of the big complaints of the group that was here for Roosevelt was them complaining that they never received notice of the original action that we took, which I know, Patrick, we discussed after the fact. But has it been explained to them why they didn't get notice originally?
We have explained that more than once. And just, just to be honest, we've, we've been clear. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the ZBA meeting in April. I had COVID, so I wasn't able to attend. But we had, the applicants before the ZBA meeting asked why they didn't get a notice to the Planning Commission meeting, and I explained to them before the ZBA meeting that the reason was that this was an application for a site plan amendment. Special land uses require public hearings, rezonings, plan developments, those are things that all require public hearings, and hence, public notices. For a regular site plan amendment that doesn't require a public hearing in the zoning ordinance, it's not something that we mail out notices for, like we would a variance or anything like that. And it's a very important distinction to make of why we, we, well, the ordinance is the ordinance. For a site plan amendment, we don't do it. But there's a distinction of why we don't do it, even if we think it's a controversial application, because if we would have sent public notices like a hearing to everybody within 300 feet on a site plan amendment, the applicant would, could allege a due, a due process violation by saying, well, all the other site plan amendments, you don't send out notices for them, but you singled me out and you sent out notices, which is why we follow the same procedure for site plan amendments, is that neighbors won't be mailed notices, but it will be put on the agenda, posted on the website, posted at Township Hall, just like all other ones, just so that procedure is the same based on this classification of application.
I'm sure this won't be the last time we'll hear that complaint either about this particular issue, so just want to make sure they've been explained.
Yep, and we have, so it was mentioned after this action was decided on this evening of someone in the audience alleging, why, why didn't we get notices? We never got notices. And so, I'm glad you brought it up here, because I can at least say on the record, during that case, it was closed. I didn't want to bring it up and continue that case, but now that we're in discussion, we explained to them before the ZBA application the reason why notices weren't given. And so, I was a little surprised to hear that again tonight, because I personally had conversations with the folks that were alleging that notices weren't sent. And so, I did talk to them personally before the ZBA meeting and explain to them why notices were not mailed prior to the Planning Commission meeting in February. They did get notices mailed before the ZBA meeting, because that was an appeal that required a public hearing, so they did get notices mailed. And for attendees of the, of the ZBA meeting in April, the ones who I had emails and names and addresses for, last week, we sent emails and sent letters to let them know that it would be on tonight's agenda. It wasn't like a hearing notice or anything like that. It was just a courtesy communication of, you commented at a meeting, and we just want to let you know this is coming up on the application. So, in that case, we went above and beyond in terms of notifying them of this meeting, so.
What along those lines, and Commissioner Ocon brought it up, I think it was Commissioner Ocon. Is there any reason why no one from Unit 101 has been present or commented or anything, other than the, other than Harriman Associates? I mean, it affects them the most. It just seems odd that none of them have been here to comment about it.
I don't know. I don't, I don't think we've heard from anyone from Unit 101 of any of those units.
There was a comment from one of the ladies there that Unit 101 people there are involved.
That's a good question. I wondered about that as well. But I guess my point is, if they're not that concerned about it, why, I guess, why should we be? I mean, to, and I know I'm going against how I voted here, but it has been in place for 20 years, and if, if Harriman is representing the people who live in Unit 101, I get it. But there's been no representation that that is the case. I guess, I guess I'm just curious now, where's, where's the driver in this?
I think the neighbor to the south of 101, the people who are sitting over here had quite a complaint.
About the applicant.
They were like, oh, yeah, that's great, but they hadn't asked for it.
Harriman hired Midwestern Consulting, so I don't know, what, is this Harriman driving this, or what? I wouldn't either.
One quick question also before we adjourn, not, not related to that, but when Home Depot came to us, and I sent you an email on this, Patrick, when Home Depot came to us for their temporary permit for outside display, and I kind of let the manager know that I wasn't happy with, I don't know, but any of you, if you drive behind Home Depot on Michigan Avenue, they have more and more stuff back there, and don't tell me that they get rid of it by nightfall and have it inside and so on and so forth. They don't. It's, it's permanent storage on the outside. And I think it should be, you know, they should be aware that, you know, maybe, maybe a denial of their outside storage permit is, is possible by the fact that they don't cooperate with the ordinance, you know, behind the store. It's awful, the way that they, they do that. I've always seen stuff back there. Now, during the day, I understand to get shipments, and I've been told, well, we get, we get the stuff put inside by nightfall. Okay, that's fine. But what you, if you drive back there right now, you're not seeing, you know, blanket area. Like the rest of, the rest of it's back there is clean. All the other stores comply with it, but Home Depot does not.
Nighttime drive-by by the ordinance officer.
Yeah, I think, is Mark Hook still the person to contact on that?
So, we, yeah, we did get the email that you sent. I forwarded on to the Ordnance Division, and Mark Hook is, he manages the Ordnance Division, but there's, there's four officers that handle different quadrants of the-
Well, I thought, I thought commercially, there was one person for commercial, and I don't know if it's divided up that way anymore.
Yeah, on the, on the website for the Ordnance Enforcement Division, there's a, there's a link for, it's a one-page handout in it. The township is separated into quadrants, so there's a dedicated ordinance officer to, in this case, the southwest quadrant of the township, who we would contact. So, I contacted that ordinance officer and let him know of, of the, of the issue with Home Depot and the outside storage. So, that is, that is a complaint that he is following up on.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
I wonder if it's time to adjourn.
Might be.
Motion in edgewise.
You got a motion? You guys are, you guys are lightweights.
We are.
Yeah, I've been on this commission at 11 o'clock at night, 12 o'clock at night.
So, who's, who made the motion?
Yes, we need a, we need a motion to adjourn.
Uh, motion?
Nancy made it, I supported it.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Aye.
Aye.
Who's, who's supported?
The ayes, were there?
The ayes have it.